Good morning, Warren.
Yeah, it's just the soccer pitch itself.
Yep, we're good. That's something good.
Yeah, I just want to know the update as far as the larger picture.
Or text.
They're gonna, um.
Yeah, I saw some of his emails.
Thanks, we're.
No.
Not your stuff.
But she said, yeah, I'm not.
I just sent that to you guys.
No, that's fine.
I thought he was gonna.
Yeah, I'm sure that will.
Yeah.
He can't do anything else but happen. Everything else doesn't matter.
It doesn't mean anything.
No, he doesn't. So he'll, he'll, he'll have no other means.
Right.
When we share and go through the.
It was in front of the larger.
How do you know?
September about.
Is Rick on there?
No, he's on. Good morning, Rick. You can hear us okay?
Don't think that thing's on again. The voice, no red, no red dot on there. I don't know.
I don't know what.
Oh, is he? No, he was going to, but now he doesn't have to leave till later. It should be up. I don't know what's on there though. Big story. Rick, off story if you hear us.
I didn't wasn't paying any attention.
All right, we need to be able to hear Rick though. Rick, can you hear me?
He's calling.
You gotta answer this phone. Can you put this on speaker? I have no idea.
Yeah, 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 good.
Got it?
Nope, Lori, I don't.
Oh, I missed him.
It said, it said recover.
Okay. We may need to turn up the volume on the speakers. It's all the way up though, Rick. Hi, Rick.
Can I?
I can.
Yeah. Okay. For some reason, the volume is not right on the other.
Okay.
I'm getting a terrible heckle.
Turn, turn down your speaker volume. There you go.
All right, it's off now.
Test, test, test.
All right, that's not too bad. I turned the, I turned the volume off on my computer.
Okay.
Tom, when we go through the, uh, the meeting, it's probably better if you read the list of things that we've done.
Sure. I've got it all here in front of me, Rick. You don't.
Right. People can hear better from you.
Right.
Only that the meeting, we have a big long list, you know?
Sure, whatever you wanna do. I'm, I'm ready to do either way.
Ri- Rick, before we do that, um, so, uh, amending the agenda, you wanna put that right under call the, calling the meeting to order because there's, uh, three things that need to go on that.
It's.
Okay.
Okay.
And what are, what are they called?
They are to approve and add the, um, election integrity grant, approve the resignation of Kelly Heatherman, and to add our August tenth work session.
Election integrity.
And, yeah, right, election integrity grant, approve the resignation of Kelly Heatherman, and to.
Heatherman?
Heatherman, yep.
Okay.
And to add the August tenth work session.
Oh, you approve, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Do we have any visitors? I couldn't see anybody except the table.
We do. Um, we have Mike here from, um, recycling. We have a couple folks, um, that were here last week and my mind's just slipping me, I'm sorry. Howard Rizwell, um.
Sheila Donnelly.
Sheila Donnelly.
And George Uhas.
George Uhas, and our sheriff is joining us this morning too. We also have both the reporters, one on the, on the Zoom and one here in person, and we also have our planning director. All right.
Hey, it's seven o'clock. Is everybody present that's going to be here?
Yep.
Hey, I'd like to follow along with county directions being ordered at the time of the meeting.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you're ready for approval of the minutes of the August first. Excuse me, I have to add some, Rick, to the minutes that we didn't get on before we printed this. Um, I'd like to make a motion to add, uh, discuss the vote on the election integrity, um, grant, uh, discuss and accept the resignation of Kelly Heatherman, and, uh, add the August tenth work sessions, uh, for approval of the minutes.
I'll second.
I made them. I second that.
I second that. On.
All with favor, aye?
Aye.
So, okay.
Can we have a discussion on that, please? An objection on that?
Wait, one second, Rick. Wait, one second. What's that?
The very first item. I'd like a comment before you vote on that.
Oh, sure.
The very first.
We're just adding it.
Yeah, so the very, Rick, can you hear me? The very first item on that doesn't seem dominious in nature. It's a grant. So maybe that one should be held over so you can publicly notice that rather. It's when you're spending money. This is receiving money. Okay, so when you receive it, are you obligated to spend that in a certain way? When the grant comes, do you have this?
No, I have the grant, but, um.
Does it tell you how to spend it, that grant?
Actually, what we wanna do is, um, vote on whether to sign.
This is just a minute in the agenda, so don't be.
There'll be discussion on it.
Okay, 'cause I, I don't know, but adding it to the item, if it's added to the agenda, can't, has to be dominious in nature. That grant, although receiving money, is gonna dictate how you spend it the minute you receive it. So in fact, you're spec- receiving and spending the money.
This is our second year with the election integrity grant.
I would still like it to be done properly, maybe move it to a special meeting.
Sure, sure. Excuse me, just one second. What it's for, it's the payment of staff. It helps with the payment of staff. The pre-canvas and canvas mail-in ballots, the printing of ballots, the training costs for district and election officials. These are the things we can spend it for. Payment of staff at polling places on election day and cost of county board of election duties. That's it. Those are the only things that we've spent it on.
You're not deciding what you're spending on at this point.
Right. These are the things that we're allowed to spend it on, but we're not deciding today how we're spending it.
And not the main, it's not dominious in nature. It should go, it should, I, I, I suggest that it move to a meeting where you have prop- you can properly notice it on the agenda.
We're just gonna vote on doing it today to apply for it. So the, the amount of the loan itself, or the grant itself is ninety-two thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars. What we're doing today is voting on whether.
Could you add that language when you, when you vote on the?
Sure.
Because it has to be.
Can I see what we're doing? I don't have an idea. We're voting on the election integrity grant. We're applying for it.
It's to apply for it?
Yeah. So I think we should vote this on.
Is that an application, Ernie?
Great.
Do I have it?
No. No.
Ri- Rick, Ernie says you have it. Isn't it, is it an application to apply to the grant?
We've signed, actually, the, or we need to sign.
The deadline is today and we didn't realize that, and if we don't vote on it today, we're going to lose ninety-two thousand dollars. So we are going to vote on it if we can properly do that and if we allow a grievance to it and reveal what I do, we're going to vote on that.
Agreed. Um, let's move on.
All right, did you, so the minutes have been amended, correct?
Correct. I.
Okay.
Wait, there was no vote. There was a motion second and then comment.
Right, and then we have to say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all in favor of it.
So, so you are here hoping to approve the minutes of the August first, twenty twenty-three regular meeting in the August tenth work session.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made?
I have an objection.
You're agreeing?
Um, I'll second that.
Before you vote, before you vote, I have an objection. When you get the comment in front of that. I don't have a copy of the minutes. There's no minutes available to us.
Are the minutes not out front?
I only have the agenda.
On the agenda. We should have minutes for the last meeting. But we can't tell us to Google it or look on your website or yet, so.
Well, we could, but we're not.
Well, we have the option of providing the minutes or printing the minutes.
Right, right.
Well, can I have the, uh, can I see the minutes and make sure the minutes are right? Can we have, could you just hold the meeting and get a copy of the meeting, of the, the, the minutes so we can review them because that's what we're here for, to make sh- make sure I had that available to us?
Oh, for the work session, you mean?
Any minutes for this meeting?
Yeah, they should both be on the internet. We would be posted.
Well, that we should have copies here. So the procedure for minutes is either you read them out loud, we can provide them to everybody that goes.
Sure, sure.
So we can, at this time, either make copies and provide them to everybody, or we can read them aloud, aloud.
Okay.
I'll take you, thank you.
You can make copies of these.
Hey, quick, I wanna make a little coffee. Waiting.
Amber's gone.
Are the minutes usually out there?
Yeah.
Usually sitting on the right of the left.
It looks like the pandemic did something, 'cause when I was on your website, it looks like a lot of stuff stopped at the pandemic and hasn't gotten back up into gear.
Sure.
So this is as peaceful as I can be, 'cause I do come in honor, but if we don't do this stuff right as easily as we can, I don't choose any other way except to do it this way.
No, I did. We're trying to do it right.
We are trying to do it right.
So. The minutes are usually out there. I don't know what happened today.
They are.
While we're waiting, the only thing that I see that I would want pertinent information on is what's the pertinent information that's available on the, what you're gonna vote on here for the security upgrade? Is there any pertinent information that the public, uh, that you gave to the public that should be given to the public?
So we'll, we'll, we'll go over that comments for action and I will just.
I'm just asking, if it, if it's printable, maybe we can get that printed too while we're in this, this.
Sure.
So maybe if you have any type of grant or any type of, uh, proposals or any type of, uh, if the bid, bids or anything like that for that, or, or what that seven thousand specifically is gonna pay for, if you have that available, now's a good time to print it, 'cause that's gonna be my next objection.
George, I believe that, that was something that was approved at the last meeting.
It was.
Mm-hmm.
That's on just old business. So that's already kind of approved.
Okay, that's good.
So I'm just gonna go over that.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Is that available?
Did we move on?
We didn't get the minutes yet.
We're waiting for the minutes. Linda's gonna bring them in.
Linda's copy in them.
Thank you.
All right, did they say draft on them anywhere?
No.
I'm gonna just put draft on them because they're not official until they're voted on.
So there's a lot of, um, new business that's gonna be voted on that looks like it needs pertinent information alongside of it, of what we're gonna do.
Just let me do the meeting first and then we'll discuss it. I mean, let me get.
Well, yeah, okay, very good. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
That is the regular meeting.
I should. And this is the work, we only go to the one thing at the work.
Somebody else is there?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Lori. I didn't notice you there.
Rick, Lori Bennett's on too.
Lori?
Lori Bennett just came on Zoom too.
Yeah, I can see that.
Oh. All right, so we've added that. We're up to the chief clerk report, Rick.
Okay, Amber Fine called, chief clerk report.
Nothing.
Do we approve these minutes?
Oh, no. I, I'm sorry. Everybody read the minutes, um, or has got a chance to look at them. And we, we voted on it. We haven't voted, um, a or n. So.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
A, a motion to accept adding those.
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. All with favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, approved.
Okay.
Amber Fine called, chief clerk.
Nothing.
She has nothing.
Tony Paul Whitley.
Uh, no report. May need an executive session at some time before the next meeting regarding a potential litigation regarding a tax assessment. But, I don't know.
Okay, well, I don't see how we're going to retire because I do have to leave for Newark and, uh, depending on how long this meeting goes, I may or may not have time at the end.
Okay, but we can do it a different day.
Well, I'd like to get it done today because we'll get it done. Okay, the tuition is up fifty-three four. What have we done in the last week? What have we got coming up?
All right, the commissioner's report of activities since last meeting. We had the Lacoona Trail Racquet Grant Update, our Fall Senior Center Long-Term Living Seminar, Ennis Mountains Heritage Region Meeting. We attended the Trucky Carnival Parade, the commissioner's annual conference, which was in Erie, PA. Um, we were able to attend the Tina Pickett Annual Summer Picket. Uh, we met at the Canoe Club for breakfast with the four Republican state, um, people for, um, judge candidates, followed by pizza lunch at the carnival grounds and a tour of the courthouse. Uh, we had a salary board judicial employee, uh, David Wilmot Day in Bradford County, the closing on Tyler Hospital by the Ruark Foundation. We did a letter of support for Comcast broadband expansion, a letter of support for Clavrap Revolution Broadband Expansion, the Northern Tier Loan Committee Meeting. That's our, uh, report of activities. Um, I also have a report of upcoming activities. You want me to go, go through that now? Uh, we had a, we have scheduled an opioid settlement meeting tomorrow, a Hope Coalition, a meeting with Senator Fetterman's Regional Representative, the Northern Tier Board Meeting on Friday, uh, Senator Lisa's annual claim bake on Thursday night, meeting with local counties concerning regional juvenile detention center. We have a NACO Regional Meeting, a Judicial Roundtable at Shatterbrook on Thursday, a Vision Committee Meeting, and a Drug and Alcohol Meeting, um, that's with Luzer and Wyoming County Drug and Alcohol. That's it for the commissioner's report.
Okay, before we, yes. Okay, before we have the, um, acting items, uh, do we have any comments on the acting items only before we vote?
So.
Okay.
There's, there, I have, I have something, please.
There are, there are some, right. He's, uh, George Uhas is raising his hand.
The, all of the action items that are not dominious in nature, that in fact have some type of contract or some type of bidding, is that available somewhere in the courthouse right now for us? I won't hold immediately, but can I leave with that? 'Cause I, I would have liked it in front so I could speak more properly, and, um, and this is the kind of stuff that we need. So is this in the courthouse I can leave with today? You're gonna vote on it, but I just at least need to know that it was here, 'cause maybe next time you can have all of the pertinent information in advance of the vote, 'cause right now I can't speak, I can't com- comment intelligently, uh, and that's a restriction of mine.
All right, I start the comment. This is Rick. I need to comment. Okay, we put this out twenty-four hours before the meeting as required by the sunshine law.
What does he put out?
It, it goes out by before ten o'clock every Monday morning. Those things are handled from then on. You can come in and read them if you would like. You have twenty, well, not twenty-four hours, the entire day Monday, you can come into meetings if you would like. If not, we're not gonna be holding up the meetings with this nonsense, waiting and waiting and waiting. Those things are always available, twenty-four hours before the meeting.
Now, Rick, you took my time, so I'd like to finish if you don't mind. So that, that, that style of talking would have gotten me a disorderly conduct, and in fact, disorderly conduct is when a public servant doesn't follow an order, and that in fact is disorder. All right, so when you dishonor an order, that's disorderly conduct. The sunshine law is very clear and State Supreme Court has already ruled, pertinent information shall be available for the attendees of a meeting. The twenty-four hours in advance, you're checking that box. Thank you. The attendees at this meeting require all pertinent information. I'm gonna allow this meeting to go on. The next meeting, all pertinent information must be available for all attendees. Thank you.
All pertinent information is available. He has on the desk there. If you wanted to study, you put it down at twenty-four hours ago. Actually, twenty-four hours.
Actually, there's not a lot on here and.
Yeah, it's okay. Uh, my, I'll rebut that with saying all attendees shall have a copy. That's what the sunshine law says. It's, it's clear. I won't, I won't speak no more. I'll allow you to go on. Thank you.
You're welcome. I, I think that, like, our first new business is, is Mike Rogers with recycling. That's just to, to let us know when it is. Um, discuss and vote on P comp workers' comp grant application. That's for thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, there is no C and Y contracts. They didn't have any, so we take that along.
And you didn't have them?
No, there, there, there was none. They, they, they didn't, they didn't bring any. Um, the seventy-five hundred dollar expenditure for interfaith is strictly for their shoes program. Um, and we're taking that out of expertise. I'm just going through everything here. I guess we could have some paperwork on the Tri-Guard Security System, but that's, that's something that we've been working on for months. It's for the fire alarm inspections. I don't really know if we have any paperwork on that. And the Stocker Association, we have the, the, the thing for them to sign. So that's really all of that is new business, so I.
Well, voter integrity and resignation.
Right, right, and I went through that, but I, I don't have a co- I wrote it out because we had to have that in today, so I just made notes so we have it, but we can, we can get a copy of that from full.
So I have a comment on this thirty-five thousand dollars. Are you going to discuss what that money will be spent on? I would be curious to know about that.
Okay, so that's where it said.
The second, your second item on new business?
Discuss and vote on P comp workers' comp grant application.
Do you have a copy of that application?
Okay.
Or, or have you decided what it's gonna be spent on already?
So we have it, we're just applying for that now. We haven't received it. Um, if we do, if we're lucky enough to get it, they're, they're looking for what we would spend it on.
Is that the safety grant where they have to do, so it has to be safety items at the courthouse?
Sure, so we've already gone through the courthouse and, and looked at, um, targeting, um, for the front doors. There's a window that brings safety, um. So there's different things in the courthouse. It's a combination of a bunch of things. So Lori has a copy of that.
So the insurance company, if I understand it correctly, gives a grant to improve items at the locations where the employees work to make it a safer spot. And this is something that.
Yeah.
And we routinely apply for this?
Every year.
And we have a safety inspection. Somebody from the insurance company walks through and commissioners identifies.
What we could do around here to make it safer. So if, some things are, are, are as small as, um, a latch on a door, and some things are as big as putting new doors up on the courthouse or, um.
So, uh, would it be fair to say that whatever the thirty-five thousand is used for, it'd be something that was identified as a change in the?
It, absolutely.
That's the building insurance.
Right.
No, workers' comp, workers' comp.
Workers' comp, yeah, not, right, not, not property insurance. That's a different one.
Not the property.
Yeah, this, you know what they call P comp. We have two insurance companies, our policy through our association, P Corp. It is physical items, cars, et cetera.
Thanks for, uh.
Oi-related compensation.
Thank you. Thanks for applying.
Based on workers' compensation, I think.
That's a good, it's a good application. Thank you.
Yeah, we always go after that too. I mean, we're one of the few that always go after that grant and, um, our, our insurance company.
Oh, no, we do, we do that every year, you know, when it's available, but that one doesn't come available for six more months. They're, they're offset during the year.
So I, I didn't read the old business. Rick, do you want me to do that?
You can. I mean, I was.
Sure.
Ask you, but, uh.
Sure, we, we.
You can.
We discussed and approved the proposal from Tri-Guard Security Systems to upgrade security systems in the Ag Building in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars, funds to come out of building fund from refinancing for addition to building. We discussed and approved the name change for Seneca Trail Park, recommended by the park board, which the new name will be Wyoming County Seneca Park, and that was approved at our.
There's a tape mark on Seneca.
Yes, there is.
I didn't notice that. Right, all right.
We, yeah.
Yeah, we got it.
I'm sorry to interrupt again.
Sure.
I, I wonder if there is a document for that seven thousand two hundred and thirteen funds that you spent, so we can have it when we go.
Sure. Sure. So we approved the proposal from them. It hasn't been spent yet. Um, they're gonna come in and upgrade the security system in the new building that we bought, but we have the, we have the, uh, proposal.
Thank you.
Sure, so when it comes to security, there's some things that we may not be able to give, and I don't know if this is one of them. Sheriff, do you have any idea what this?
I wouldn't provide exactly what sensors wear for safety and security, however, number of sensors, number of cameras.
We could do that.
Overall.
So it may have to be redacted. I don't know what's in it, but.
Understood.
Sheriff, would you mind doing that redaction?
I can review it.
I mean, you're, you're the guy that's got the item of security. Thank you, sir.
So we can go into new business now, Rick?
Okay, new business. Mike Rogers would like to discuss the.
I promise they'd get him out of here. Sorry.
So Wyoming County Recycling Center, we're gonna be doing an electronic event on September sixteenth, and it's all pre-registration due to traffic control. And we have a cost list here.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, please, I do wanna participate this time. Our air conditioner is further this way.
Yeah.
Yep. Do it for our recycling event.
Hey, my question, so with respect to the TV, I have a TV I wanna bring in. It has a wall racket with it. Does a wall racket come with it, or is that just going to be very much?
Uh, the wall racket come with it. Sorry, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Small sky noise.
Yeah, this is a real good program. We do it twice a year, usually in May and September. Uh, it generates a lot, um, for people to go with their electronics. We try to keep everything as minimal as possible, and the reason for the traffic control is to keep everything from down by the road to a minimum. We usually do like twenty-five, uh, people per half hour, so like it's a in and out.
It's really amazing. If you haven't gone, you have somebody there to help you unload everything, get it all done in like a minute.
Yeah, you're right in and out of there.
It takes, it takes no, no time. Right, and it's really, gets a lot of, a lot of junk that's not dropped out from the side of the road and, and places that it shouldn't. It's not dropped off on the side of the road and, and places that it shouldn't.
It's a real good program.
Oh, sorry.
Is there anybody that gets got any questions or anything on any of this?
Just wondering why it's so expensive to make several TVs.
It's the, it's just the process that they do, especially get the chemicals out of them. You know, it just takes process. I mean, they're going to take it all apart. And, and, you know, for them to come and do it, the program too. It's just, you know, I mean, everything there's a cost. You try to keep, and that's why everything else we try here is a minimum to try to keep there. So there isn't any cost.
Right, so this covers our costs from them. We don't make anything on the recycling event. Everything is covered.
They run the whole event.
They run the whole thing themselves, so.
The traffic and the transportation, all that, the recycling of everything.
But it has gotten more expensive for some of the more electrical stuff and things over the years, years.
Yeah.
Type in here.
A TV and a wooden cabinet probably take some minimum. I hang up hours later.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, and get everything out, yeah.
Yeah, at a hundred dollars.
And that, you know, and that's what they try to do when we work with them there, yeah. And they take like all the free ones out of the air conditioners, refrigerators, stuff, and that's why there's charges for them. And there is, there's hardly anybody combined to do that. And, you know, some people years ago were, you took it to the place, they would take a TV. But a lot of places don't do the free on anymore.
Right.
And we're just trying to get.
Experience, I can tell you it's very expensive. And you have to be special licensed, so you have to have employees that are licensed.
So this draws a huge crowd and we get a lot of people bringing stuff, so we're real grateful for the public for, for their support.
Keeps everything going on our back.
Yeah.
Mike, what is the date of that?
September sixteenth.
How about the G, John, sure, if you'd like.
I'll save you one, Rick.
I'll pull, yeah.
Okay, I'll do it tomorrow.
Alright.
I'll pull one of these out of the desk.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, a couple of other questions about that? Dave, discuss and vote on the P comp, uh, P comp workers comp grant application, the thirty-five thousand dollars.
See, that's something. Oh, go ahead. I'll make a motion that we, we apply for the P comp grant.
I'll second it.
Paul and David, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So, um, discuss and vote on the election integrity grant. It's approximately ninety-three thousand dollars. Is this what the allocation is for us to do here?
No, we don't have it.
I'll make a motion.
Alright.
Wait a second.
Yeah, any discussion?
Well, the discussion already was done, I have to.
That's, that's true, that's true. Um, so I'll second it.
Paul and David, aye?
Aye.
Aye. So there isn't any C and Y contracts?
I'm sorry, what?
There is no C and Y contracts.
Um, and we need to just, discuss and vote on the resignation of Kelly Everton?
Um, yeah, Kelly's been with us since twenty fifteen and she's moving on to a different job. I'll make a motion. Her last official notice. Her last day is eight twenty-nine of twenty-three's. Um, the letter says her time at the county has proven to be rewarding and has really enhanced her growth as a professional. Um, so I'll make a motion that we. We accept your resignation. Sorry.
I'll second it.
Paul and David, aye?
Aye.
Aye. She worked at Children and U.
Okay.
Yep.
Discuss and vote on the seventy-five dollar expenditure for interfaith grants back to sports programs from the Act thirteen, Marcellus Fund on the Social Services category. Play your motion.
Oh, yeah, any discussion on that? If none, I'll make a, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
And, and I'll second it.
Paul and David, aye?
Aye.
So move, discuss and vote on the Tri-Guard Security System, annual fire alarm, expanded question inspections in all county buildings, your place of building three ninety-two, which by the way is required.
Right.
And we have to be active. Play your motion.
I'll make that motion, and that has been the same price for the last several years. Um, there has not been an increase or anything, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Paul and David, aye?
Aye.
So move, discuss and vote on the soccer association, utilize the field of the Ag Building for youth soccer.
So I can say a little bit about that and, and the, the now scare too. That the soccer teams and association, their, their president came and, and talked to us about asking if they could use the field. They don't want it to be a, a hindrance to anybody in Wyoming County. They've offered to mow if it needs mowed or to do any, any of the cleanup or anything that they, they might need to do. They've just asked us to use it. So we've put together, uh.
A use agreement.
A use agreement. Um, so it's, it's, so they sign it and part of the, the agreement is that they have their own insurance and everything is covered. And they've provided us with all, all that's needed. Um, so we, that's, that's what we're voting on this morning. So I'll have them sign it.
One of the blanks is a fee. So if you were gonna charge them a fee to use it, but if they are doing cleanup and cutting the grass.
Can we do that in, in?
In lieu of a fee.
In lieu of a fee. I, I'd say that.
So you want to amend that agreement to provide.
Okay, I. I'd like to.
Well, without charging, how are our companies still legal?
Well, well, yeah, the consideration given from them is the grass cutting and maintenance of the field and the surrounding area. So that, that, that's, that's valid consideration.
Right, right. So I can, I can give the, the young lady a call. She'll come in and sign everything, um, if we all vote on it. Is there any discussion on that?
Yeah, the only other thing I'd point out, it, it has, uh, terms and conditions that are similar to any usage of county property. So if you were gonna allow somebody to have exclusive use for a period of time at the park or maybe at the courthouse square, uh, has all those terms and conditions required. So it, it's not unlike anything else that.
Right, we're gonna do it, I think, here, our upcoming event, um, for the Hope Coalition's gonna do a drug and alcohol, uh, meeting out here.
Well, except don't forget, up here, the only difference is it goes through the sheriff.
Right.
Right, sheriff?
I'm already coordinating with John.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this, this usage down there would need to be coordinated with us.
Sheriff, I don't worry.
So I'd like to.
I don't see the need to, cause they're not going into a building.
I'll make a motion. I'm sorry. Yep, uh, motion's been made in second. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's all the action items. Comments and questions on non-action items, open to the floor.
I have a couple of things.
Oh, you know what? I haven't been paying attention to this. I'm so sorry. Okay, so, so Lori, you have a couple of recommendations. Um, oh, and you know what?
We can hear you.
We just, wait a minute, wait a minute.
It's, well, one minute, Lori, please.
Try it again. Not good.
It sounds like the TV speaker is working with the hello speaker, it's not.
I can't get a word to say.
Test, test, maybe one more time.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. Rick, you're.
Okay, I have two recommendations on, as you know, you probably already know that, um, our preschool program and our pre-K program, we've lost a few teachers because of funding. Um, I'm asking if you as commissioners, the community, please write letters in support of this so that Governor Shapiro will sign the bill and pass it. So we don't have parents scurrying for childcare. We have kids getting an education that needs an education at daycare, at pre-kindergarten. Um, I would love to see the commissioner's support.
Lori.
For this program and funding.
I don't have a, I don't mean to interrupt you at all. Would you send us some recommendations of letters that you have or have, have written? Just so that we can understand that perfectly. We'll be glad to support.
Yeah, and secondly.
Right.
Can you give us some others that maybe we can send? I think we're all fully in support of this. But, but I have a question about that. I, I know that they were talking about the budget. They were increasing the funding for that. How did Wyoming County get less?
Because they haven't.
Some kind of a, a change with the, with the way that they, 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 they could do that money? Because they were always saying, how do we get any extra money for pre-K and stuff? And then we got less. I mean, what did they do to us?
That's what I would like to know. I have no idea, um, except that the governor hasn't signed the bill.
Okay.
I believe it's HB six eleven.
That's not great.
I think if they signed, but then, then we would get the obligation we had before. Is that what you're understanding it?
That's my understanding. I know we lost a, well, a few employees. They, what they did is they did a cutback. So there may be like two classrooms of each. However, the other two teachers say that would teach in that classroom at the CDC. They, they've been let go because funding hasn't been, nothing's been signed by the governor. And they did a major cutback because the budget's not signed.
Lori, if you can, send us every, everything you got there. We'll support, we'll support.
Okay, and secondly, um, I noticed driving around that there was property on Harding's Flats, not on the creek side, but on the opposite side of the road, that has recently gone up for sale. I know that the commissioners have a way either to, I would recommend, if you would look at it, to put in for grants for either low-income housing or senior citizens. Um, it's close to town. It's not that far out for our senior citizens. And.
But part of the problem is, Lori, I just wanna let you know, footnote here. Any of this type of thing requires anymore that it be on public sewer and water.
Right.
Okay, so, okay.
That's a problem. It's a serious problem.
So TRH is looking into areas in Wyoming County.
And I'd be glad to explain that. I'd be glad to explain that to you deeper, but you know, I'm, I'm president of Habitat for Humanity too. So we get involved in all these things. So anytime, I'd be glad to discuss it with you, cause it's a high concern to all three of us.
For, with.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Dennis wants to come in later today also to talk about some things. So I mean, he's, it's been on his radar. Um, there's like eighty-five people on a waiting list for homes, elderly people here in Wyoming County.
I know, that's why, that's why I'm asking.
Right, yeah.
Cause I know some of the folks I personally work with.
Right.
Are at the bottom of list after list and it's been a year or two.
Right. It's really sad. It's really hard, but I think they have found some property and I'm hoping they'll move forward.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Dave, any comments and questions?
I have some. Nobody else has those?
Sure.
Okay, so the, uh, you guys did a good job, um, of getting me some stuff from last, the last meeting that we had, public.
Hi, John, can you step up to the table?
Yes, sir.
Sure, sure. Sorry about our.
Rick, can you hear me okay?
No, I'll just do it. Okay.
I'm at the table on the opposite side of Tommy, so you can, I'm five feet away from you maybe. Are you guys created a, a resolution which is helpful? Obviously, I definitely try to stay inside of your policies and procedures. These are, can, can help make your meetings run well. I definitely am governed by my constitution and state law too. Um, so I, I wanna be careful as a citizen. I wish I had a chance to, did you guys vote this in already, the resolution twenty, twenty-three dash seven? Was that a work session? So you can't vote things in on a work session? Uh, section's.
Yeah.
Well, we, it's called a work session. It's a public meeting. Okay, so is it a work session or is it a public?
It's a public meeting. So was it?
It's an advertised meeting.
What's it advertised as? Is it advertised as Wyoming County Commissioner's Work Session?
No.
It, that's what it says right there.
Oh, it, it might be on our notes, but in the beginning of the year.
Because I would have, I would have allowed you guys obviously to do your work that you guys authorized to do to create resolutions. I would have come to that work session. If it's a public meeting, it needs to be. It needs to be properly noted. It's advertised and it's, it's, it's advertised as a work session.
No, it's, it's advertised as a public meeting. At the beginning of the year.
I understand, I understand. The minutes here.
Well, the minutes say that, but, but it's advertised.
Okay, let's, let's work, let's work on all that together then. Let's, let's.
No, that's what I, I'm trying to work with you.
It's, it's encrypted by accident. I'm sure of it, cause I know everybody at this table. I know everybody's integrity level. There's nobody here, not even I, and I would like to make sure that I'm giving that gratis, because I'm not giving that sometimes.
Yeah.
I, I, I get, so I just wanna make sure that we're not encrypted by accident, okay? Cause more people wanna be involved and in hard times you need to have private work sessions.
It's not a private work session. George, the purpose of those meetings is to discuss things that have to be done in public. And it is advertised that way. Here, here's what happens. So if I can. Typically on, on those type of meetings, uh, they come in and they discuss upcoming things and, and questions in a public forum with an agenda. But in this, in this case, you have requested meeting minutes or meeting procedures.
Yep.
We couldn't find any that existed.
Okay.
So we wanted to get them adopted for you.
Yep.
And that, that was, and that's, and if you look at the minutes from now, that's about all they did.
And, and some people.
That is all we did.
What was, how was it advertised?
It, it's advertised as a commissioner's meeting. Um, and it's, and it's, at the beginning of the year in January, we advertised prison board, commissioners' meetings and election days. That's all. Nothing under.
Thanks. I, I'm definitely not the norm right now. Quite frankly, the county created me. The, the county created me and, and I thank you, because I know stuff now that I never knew before. And I've seen things that I can't unsee and hear things I can't unhear. And there are people who are not gonna give this level of attention. Right? Because their lives are busy. Not that mine's not. I, I have a big work to come here. Um, so there, there are things in here that we'll have to discuss, cause if in fact I knew that this was gonna happen, I was able to come to this, I would have come to that meeting and I would have in fact alerted you guys to compelled speech. Right? We're not allowed to have any kind of compelled speech. Uh, that's still a violation of, like, if there's things in here, then I'll, then I'll send it to you line by line, open space like you suggested. And I will show you where potentially some of these things may need to be have revision for everybody's sake. Okay, because, uh, it's just, it's just better. I won't take too much time here. I'll do that through letter writing to you. Um, let's see. The pertinent information, gotta work on the pertinent information. I promise you the sunshine law is clear. Pertent information needs to be available upon, for the attendees. If you only have four or ten people here, just have it available. Cause that shows that you're doing that pre-work, that if I do want it, I can come in and get it easily. Having it available for people in attendance is actually critical.
It is, it is available, George. And, but one of the things that you mentioned earlier. And, and just, if anyone's keeping time because I'm speaking, I'll just deduct the space, please. You know, a, a lot of the things that they approve, uh, for instance, when C and Y contracts, they'll, they'll be a stack this tall.
Right.
We're not making copies.
No, sir, no, sir.
Okay.
So during the meeting that you requested that you, that we make copies, that's not gonna happen. They'll be available and. Well, you find a way to redact it down or to put pertinent information in front. So we don't need all of the boilerplate.
A lot of them.
I'm telling you, it, though, everything will be available.
There's people's names.
But we're, we're, oh.
I mean, like.
Well, let me, when we have to redact.
Right, okay.
That'll be redacted.
Right.
But everything is here on the table that they're gonna act on. Okay, so here's what's gonna happen. All pertinent information will be available for attendees, for attendees, a copy of it to take.
Well, we're.
You can make, you can make a request to pay quarter for K. Like that will, that won't happen. It will follow this up some other time down here today. Thank you, Paul. I appreciate that.
Some things we've done right.
Yeah, yeah.
We've done everything wrong.
No, 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 guys, guys, listen, listen, you, this is, I've, I've been across the state.
Right.
They're running a meeting, especially coming out of a pandemic. If you weren't running it well going into the pandemic, you're not running well coming out of it. You, you go to your website and see where your dates have stopped on things, so just.
Yeah, that.
I just, these are, these are, these are friendly nudges, whether you like it or not. These are just friendly nudges. Uh, I, I learned a lot on how to give my friendly nudges. If you guys are all public servants, you're serving the public. I'm a member of the public and there are many public people who don't know what they don't know. I just happen to know some things and I think it's important. It keeps everybody on guard. Uh, my last thing would be, if you don't mind, like send me something for the sand trucks. Is anybody doing anything about the sand trucks? I tried the personal approach. I tried to get, uh, to DEP involved. They want fugit, they wanna see fugitive dust and they wanna see tracking. I have the videos of fugitive dust leaving inches of product going down the road. Now, here's the problem. DEP wants to see it happening in order for them, they, they're not the videos and not the cameras. They want, they have to see it in order to. So then they did tip me off that, unless you guys already know this, if somebody's doing something, shut me up. But they told me in fact, now it moves into Pendoc and State Police for littering, because once they can't track it, then they can't see the fugitive dust they call it, which I have videos of just pouring off trucks. Now, the funny thing is, I said, why don't you put a, a wash station there? Well, they don't want their men downwind of that. That's why they don't have a wash station, they don't have a wash station down that plant, because they said to me, quote unquote, we don't want our men downwind of that, but meanwhile, it's throughout our county, I have it, I could track it up three miles away from the plant where it actually builds up on the side of the road because of perfect vortex, perfect windage or whatever, and then the cars just keep redelivering to people's front lines. So, so anybody, has the county did anything, or is it gonna be the people, because I get it, sometimes things don't move unless the people move it.
Well, there's not a whole lot the county could do. We have done air quality. Did air quality, they spent a fortune. Over a million bucks.
And this last time, it was a real one that applied for the. So the pot, the stuff that I can collect up the side of the road by the inches, that's littering.
Right, so they.
The county doesn't have any authority on that management.
They have given us tours, have done different things down there, they're trying a little bit to, to work with us a little bit. We have DEP involved and everything, but the county doesn't really have a full.
Environmental laws or DEP?
Right.
Yeah, they told me, State Police, the DEP got me, tipped me off, said you're gonna use the, you're gonna use Pendoc, and you're gonna use the State Police, if you guys are gonna find a way to use them where you guys have strength.
Right, right.
And I guess we have to try with private.
That's not true, I mean, we, we've worked on it, but, but.
Complaints are coming, and I know that.
Maybe I'll take a blacktop this year in the next couple of weeks, that the plans are there and everything that, to help.
Yeah, a wash record is something, they sit there anyhow, because they gotta wait for traffic.
So it's, it's not a lot different than just other counties, I mean, they have the same things set up, which they've tried a little bit.
I'm gonna, I'll keep working on Pendoc and State Police from the private side, and we will too.
Thank you, guys. Oh, I got a chat.
Wait a minute.
Warren says he's just happy to be here this morning, sorry, Warren, I put some words in your mouth. He's got nothing, he's got nothing. You're good, both reporters are good.
I'm just gonna add, in regards to the soccer, I mean, that's, the soccer approach, you know, the commissioners for use of that field, because of the lack of youth athletic facilities across the county for outdoor occasion, you know, for them to, for practice facilities. So this is kind of just like a first step in a larger, you know, a larger set of plans, a larger goal moving forward, so.
And we're happy to do it, I mean, we're happy to do what you said.
There's a lot of wheels turning in the background for, for larger plans to be formed with all four of the youth athletic leagues, but soccer need, soccer has an immediate need right now because of the loss of the shoe factory fields on, on West Street.
Yeah, so we're, we're happy, and I'll get a word from her as soon as this meeting's over, so she knows that they can start tonight if they want. Alright. Super.
Are we gonna have an executive, Rick, you have time for an executive session or no?
Yes, I do.
Okay, alright. I'm gonna step up?
No, no, just. No, it's just an executive session. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Aye, I don't know if you forgot that it was me and her. Thank you, Rick.